You ready? Well, let's pull it up. Let's go. All right. Welcome, everybody, to the August 5th Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting. We have the minutes before us from the last meeting. Do any changes need to be made? If not, I will accept a motion to approve.
I move we approve the motion presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. We'll put the second down here to the left. And any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Motion passes unanimously. First item on agenda, SD 2406.
Yes, sir. Little unusual here. We're bringing you a waiver request, so we put it under old new business. Typically, those are advertised during the preliminary plat. We have Item B on the agenda as the final plat for this project. So, right now, under this one, we're just looking at a waiver. And essentially, this is to, a waiver to not put the underground power lines. Staff is in support of this situation. On the screen is the blue is the three lots within this phase. Essentially, we looked at it even from the PUD. This is a little bit different character road, doesn't follow our standards. A lot of standards within that PUD were kind of waived. As long as we had a paved road, we're navigating through trees. Everything in yellow is existing power lines overhead. Even if these went under, you're still not getting the benefit. So, that's our review criteria, our comments, even the Article 6, Section M, has that this may be waived when there is environmental or even financial interest at stake and it's not feasible. Again, that's the area that is being adjusted. Some may not even be adjusted. I know some of the guidelines and stuff are in the middle of trees right now, have grown into some of the trees. We do recommend approval of this. As y'all know, this is a, this PUD consists of, I believe, 14 lots, maybe 17 total. This waiver would only apply to the first three that we saw, heard about in March. Any other waivers for any other future phases would have to be advertised and voted on. So, this is just for the waiver. We will talk about the final plat and Item B. But if there's any questions on this, I'll be happy to answer.
So, this is to have the utilities go above ground instead of underground?
Stay above ground instead of go underground.
And what is the purpose of that?
As we said, there, this is not a typical road.
Is this because of the trees that we're...
Trees and, yes. And even the water lines that were put in and some of the construction that was out there, there was a lot of mud that hit our bay. We got complaints for a week straight when there were some trenches.
Well, I remember when we did this original approval and a lot of neighbors came out and the number one concern was trees.
Right.
Trees, I think, was the number three concern as well.
That was connectivity to the existing roads and trees were the two, you know, two big goals where they're not, roads are not connected and the trees are saved.
Okay. All right. This is not a public hearing, is it?
It is not.
All right. Commissioners, are there any questions for staff? The developer is here in the back. If you have any questions for him as well. How are you, Holly? If there are no questions for staff or the developer, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we grant the waiver under SD 2406 for the Montrose bud.
I've got a motion to grant the waiver. Do I have a second?
Excuse me. Is that with staff?
With staff recommendations, yes. I'm sorry.
I have a motion to approve the waiver, subject to staff recommendations.
That is correct, yes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda, SD 2412.
We have talked about this a lot. This is going to be a fast one. This is Hilltop Lot 29. Y'all remember the site plans, the MOPs. This was here last month for preliminary approval. It's back in front of you for final. There's no infrastructure needed and we recommend approval. This is just a formality with above the units. It's got to get preliminary and final. We had a fire hydrant, a fire flow test needed to be done a few days before the meeting. It got, came back that the fire flow would work, so we knew there was no infrastructure. So, we're back in front of you to recommend final approval of SD 2412.
Is this a public hearing? This is not a public hearing if there isn't.
It is.
It is one? Okay. Any questions for staff at this time? All right. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing at this time. Would anybody from the public wish to speak to this? This is Hilltop off of Section Street in Fairhope. In that case, I'll close the public hearing, Commissioners. I saw Mike walk out here a minute ago. See? I must have stepped down.
He just had it out.
Okay. Somebody here from Jade?
Hi.
Okay. So, we do have somebody from Jade if you have any questions for the staff or from the engineer. Any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I move we approve SD 24.12. I amend Hilltop Lot 29.
Is that subject to staff recommendations?
No recommendations.
Okay. I thought there was a fire. Okay.
Nope.
Okay. All right. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. All right. That takes us to SD 2415.
Okay. This was the three lot final plat for the first phase of Montrose Preserve PUD. We saw this in March in the preliminary. The left is the PUD in the kind of teal color. And as we're all aware, it is undeveloped lots of Phase One. As seen on the right, the wooded area. The green spaces we talked about, that was one of the big ones, both from the, I believe it was the original PUD was 76 lots. So, screening that from highway and the cemetery was a main goal. So, the 40-foot buffer along the highway has been put into a common area. The 20-foot buffer is on Lot One. These are, have been unopened, historically unopened Baldwin County right-ofways for close to 100 years. I don't know, I don't recall the exact date. The city has accepted those right-ofways. And within that resolution, the city acknowledged we do not intend to open those right-ofways at this time. There's a plan for connecting to all the other lots. However, the one portion of the road that was being constructed, it was in this Third Avenue. It was Third Avenue, or Street, Third Street. That was county maintained, so the city was going to maintain this one. So, we asked for the extension of this paved area to access these three lots. The City Council will, I mean, the City Council will be accepting that. So, we do have a infrastructure improvement. The utilities within this area are no city utilities. You've got Riviera Power, Daphne for water, and the plan is for septic tanks on these larger lots. We did see a, an extension of this. There was some major runoff and some work done without permits. I believe we have a finally, a pre-construction meeting tomorrow morning to meet the contractor on site to get this work started. So, those plans are approved and we just need to meet with the contractor on site before that gets started. Water, there was a condition of the preliminary plat that water will be finalized before we receive the final plat. To kind of give you a little background on that one, Daphne Water, and y'all know we've denied other subdivisions within Montrose because of the water supply. The fire protection was an issue. Daphne has already installed a six-inch water line that, in essence, is only, I don't, I don't know what it's connected to, but not enough water supply. But they are bringing a 10-inch south on Greeno Road and will come in to connect to this six-inch line. That project is already let. They have, you know, picked their contractor and are moving forward. We've seen plans from it. They're going to start at north of the city limits. We're kind of working with them because right now, they're, they were trenching right under the live oaks. We have a contract with Aldott on, so we're, we're trying to get, figure out where the best location for that new tenants line is. So, we are recommending approval of this since we don't, we know that project is let, and our building official, Eric Cortina, is also a planning commissioner. Eric, I'm going to be candid here. You've kind of complained that we put notes on plats. And it's true. It is, it puts a burden on him to go look at plats for building permits. But with his support, we do have, to resolve this conflict with the preliminary plat, we would put a, fire flow shall meet international fire code standards at the time of final plat. I'm sorry. This was a condition. We would like to see a note on the plat if we approve this tonight, that no building permits will be issued until we get confirmation that that, in writing, that that water is meeting the international fire code standards. Is that, anything to add there? Okay.
Do you want that to be number four on your conditions?
I don't have that from it. We'll, we'll touch base and I'll read it exactly when we get to the condition page. Just want to kind of give you why that condition will be there. No sidewalks being installed for the same reason we talked about within these right-ofways. However, there is an easement provided on the plat. In this phase, there was no drainage infrastructure, so no O and M play, no O and M phase. As the future phases develop, we would like that to be brought into the same POA, HOA that is formed to maintain the common areas. There will likely be some drainage facilities, not traditional ponds, but some other facilities. And as we see those preliminary plats, would like those to be included. And as I said before, there are buffers there. Because we don't have a road installed and tested and all those things, you know, we are recommending approval, but we cannot sign the plat until those roads have been tested, installed, tested, and inspected by our Public Works Department. And this is just the standard things, copy of recorded plat, maintenance and guarantee agreement. So, with that said, staff does recommend approval with the following conditions. And I'm going to read this one just to put it on record. In lieu of the fire flow requirements of the preliminary plat approval, there should not be any further building permits given for the three lots until, A, Daphne completes the 10-inch water main extension, and B, the engineer confirms and running the fire flows at the newly installed fire hydrant meets international fire code standards. The following note shall be added to the plat as part of this condition. No building permit will be issued for any lot within this subdivision until a fire flow report confirms there is adequate water to meet the fire protections requirements of the IFC, International Fire Code. So, there is a hydrant installed, but the water to it is not sufficient. Condition two, roads will need to be paved and tested. Public Works shall review test results and confirm the, confirm the road has passed final inspections prior to staff signing the final plat. As-built drawings with engineer certification shall be required prior to staff signing the final plat. And there is, and as part of the building permit review, the Public Works did request a bollard installed by the hydrants. There's tight space for garbage trucks and fire trucks, so they've agreed to install that. So, we just want to make sure that is installed. I believe we have, we've got Dewberry here as well as the applicant, Mr. Thomason, are here. So, if there's any questions from them, someone's here for it. And of course, staff's here if you have any questions.
I've got a question for staff. This may be more for Eric than you. I'm not sure. Eric, if they came to you to get a building permit and the final plat hadn't been signed, would they be able to get a building permit? Okay. My concern was just having the roads not paved. You know, we had a real issue up there at Battles Village when they cleared the lots and the roads at the same time when we had that six or seven inch rain and it made a real mess. So, I just wanted to make sure we wouldn't get, I'm not real comfortable with, you know, normally when we have a punch list, it's more, you know, Mike wanting to memorialize items in there just so that, you know, they're kind of notes. And having the last two, you know, the roads not built, that just seems kind of like a stretch for approval and something that, I mean, y'all are looking at, I know, moving forward on this and have spent more time on this than probably any other project in the last month. So, I'll support it, but I'm just not real comfortable in, you know, having items pass the final plat when the roads aren't built yet.
And not, not to, you know, this, this is certainly not particularly anything about this case, but next month, you see, we'll see a little, a few smaller amendments with a bigger goal. And I think one thing we can do is make sure all the design team knows, you know, what we're expecting on final punch lists and things like that. Because as we've discussed in meetings here before, the intent is not to be partially complete when an application is submitted, but complete, 100% complete and, and knowing what needs to be done. So, during the time between application here, really a week before this meeting, we have everything finalized and, and we're coming to you. So, you'll see some amendments coming and probably a little bit more conversations under that amendment about the process.
Yeah. I'd like to see some process changes so that staff's not spending nearly as much time going back and forth on things that are required to be approved, just senseless wasting of time. And we've got, you know, nice opportunity now that things have slowed down a little bit to look at our comprehensive plan and focus on that a little bit more and focus on the bigger picture some. All right. Would anybody from the, like to speak on behalf of the applicant at this time? There's no requirement to.
I was just trying to give you a little reassurance on everything getting taken care of that you're concerned about. We have a pre-construction meeting set up in the morning and the work that we're talking about, we should be finished with it and, within a week to get it. So, I'm sorry. I'm Jason Estes with Dewberry.
Right. That's far.
But yeah, we should have all that taken care of pretty quick. I know this is out of the ordinary. It's been some, it's been a long road trying to get to this point and staff has done a great job of working with us to try to get us over the finish line here, but we really expect to be done here in a week.
Yeah. Well, this is real unusual and, you know, because of the location of it, normally underground and connectivity are two of the really biggest things that we require, but so many, you know, there's so many old trees there and the people through that Montrose area have made such an effort to protect those trees that we hate to do anything to, to hurt them. And if y'all will, just be very careful when you get going on the construction phase to watch the trees in the, in the common areas that are the buffer between y'all and Greeno would be really nice. A lot of people have done a lot of effort to try to protect that Greeno road view.
We certainly will.
All right. Any more questions for the applicant?
I observe some construction underway now. South side of this property is, does that have anything to do with this property?
I'm not sure exactly what you're talking about. Now, the, the water line that Daphne put in is, it's only been a recent work that, when it was done, so you may see some, some remnants of their, their construction where they put the water line in through there.
All right. And Commissioner, there is two projects that have been underway. One was Daphne Water that did bring the, I think, all that existed in this Third Street right-ofway, but there's also an Aldott project with some drainage repairs.
That's probably what I saw from Highway 98.
And you do see a little bit of that tree buffer because what, there's, there's two things you see. You've got a little tree line and then a wide-open Alabama power line that is probably 50 feet wide, you know? I mean, and, and they did cut through some of that. The buffer is, we know as you move into those phases inside the, the Alabama power. But that, that was probably the most visible one.
All right.
You see driving down 98 was the Aldott repair.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing at this time. Does anybody from the public wish to speak to this item? In that case, I'll close the public hearing, Commissioners. Any further questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I just want to reiterate what Reece Lee spoke on about the trees. We've seen developers in the past, probably the same, that run over historic trees. And I just want to make sure that we've got some kind of protection in place. I know the neighbors luckily will be out there raising cane too, so.
Well, and, you know, that, that's one of the main reasons. We tried to schedule the pre-construction meeting a couple of times and engineers and owners were able to attend the contractor hat. And so, we want to, we want to speak directly with the contractor to, to let them know. I think we were originally scheduled for Thursday, so we'll make sure.
Expectations.
Hmm?
That was my only comment.
All right. Thank you. Any further questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I move we approve case SD 24.15, Montrose Preserve PUD, Phase One, final plat, subject to staff recommendations.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second to approve, subject to staff recommendations. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Motion passes unanimously. I am missing SD 2418 in my packet.
I didn't get it either.
I presented it. I saw it in the package. I'm going to run it for conversation today. Thank you. Yeah. As I don't have the complete packet inside of the slides, I do have most of the beneficial information that needs to be on here.
It's fine. As long as you have that and the recommendations.
Absolutely.
The plats, the recommendations will be fine. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Mike Jeffries with the City of Fairhope. This is Overland, Phase Two, for final plat approval. Public hearing to consider the request of the applicant, SE Civil, acting on behalf of the owner, 68 V, Overland 2021, for final plat of Phase Two. It's a 29-lot major subdivision. It's approximately 12 and a half acres. It's zoned a planned unit development or a PUD, and it's located at the southeast corner of the intersection of County Road 48 and River Mill Drive. The preliminary plat was approved at the November 1st, 2021 Planning Commission meeting. It did receive a one-year extension at the October 2nd, 2023 meeting. And here we are today for the final approval. And the PUD was, it was granted and annexed in at the beginning of 2021. On the screen, on the left, you can see the zoning map. Highlighted in purple is the area that we're reviewing today. The right side of the screen, zoomed in of the aerial, again, you'll see the red lines. Those are the, what was Phase One that was approved last year. On the screen is a copy of the plat. I'll let that sit there for just a second. Let you guys take a look at it. You can see that there is Phase One common area. That is to the northwest section of this. That part was what was reviewed during Phase One. Phase Two primarily consists of the 29 lots on the east side of the property and then a large wooded common area, partial wetlands. On the west side, there is a covered bridge that connected from Phase One into, or not a covered bridge, a boardwalk that went across from Phase One common area into the Phase Two common area that gets to a primitive trail, circular path throughout that wooded Just some current images for some aerials that we took. This is the southern, southern half of the property looking towards the east. And overall, the development is the part of Phase Two. Isle sidewalks and street trees have been installed. The watering and maintenance of those trees are responsibility of the subdivider. The engineer has provided his engineer certification for the design and construction in accordance with the subdivision regulations. The area that we're going to highlight is the current walking trails or mulch paths. The paths have washed out several times. We have had the O and M plan been revised and amended to include a maintenance path plan for that mulch trail. Staff does have concerns for the long-term viability of the proposed path even with the maintenance plan. The path in Phase One has been neglected and you'll see some, I've got some images of that, which brings even more concern to how the trail will be maintained. The, had noticed that there, in the staff report, that the boardwalk had been damaged. The top of a large, I believe, a water oak or an oak tree had fallen off, but that boardwalk has been replaced, the tree removed, and the boardwalk are repaired to where it needs to be. The path in the woods, I believe, staff needs, it needs some clear markings on where that path is. It's a primitive trail, but when you get in there, it's hard to navigate to know exactly which way to go. It's designed to be a circular path through there. So, if the applicant has some type of markings that they can propose, you know, there's different options out there. You know, it signs, even frocks indicating stay on this path. On the screen on the left is an image taken on July 2nd prior to the path being fixed. This is the same image that you see on the right side, which was July 30th where the path had been, been restored. If you look close on the top of the right-hand picture, you can see remnants of an older mulch path and where that mulch has migrated as the waters have come through. And that's, staff's concern is how are we going to prevent that from happening when it rains? Which, we don't really see a permanent solution to the, the mulch being on top of the ground without the POA, HOA going out there and remulching after every rain event and then being able to account for where's all that mulch going every time that it washes out. The Phase One path, the first picture here on your left, the mulch path actually was supposed to connect to the sidewalk. It no longer does. I believe from doing some, after the staff report went out and after these pictures were taken, it was during the home construction. I think the landscapers saw bare dirt and they took the sod and just covered up where the bare dirt was. But nonetheless, it has not been, been restored. The image on the right is the mulch path that connects when you first come into the entrance, right next to the model home. And that pathway talks, walks you back, as you can see in the picture on the left, is the opposite, opposite view there. There's some washouts and reels inside of that path as well. The follow-up activities required is the copy of the recorded plat, copy of the recorded O and M agreement. We need to add Phase Two to the Phase One O and M agreement when it is done. The maintenance and guarantee agreement executed by the subdivider. Staff's recommendation is condition, conditional approval of SD 2418, Overland Phase Two, subject to the following conditions. Mend the site data table on the plat to read current zoning, PUD ordinance number 1713. Number two, add general notes to the plat. Drainage and utility easements exist over all common areas. Two, the Properties Owners Association is responsible for the maintenance of the walking trails and keeping them in good working order. Three, remove a planning director's signature block from the plat. In the staff report, you'll see that there was a four to repair the boardwalk. That condition is now removed. Five, which would become four, is add trail markings to indicate the path through the woods to be approved by the planning director. And I'll be happy to answer any questions on behalf of staff. And we have Aaron Collins with SE Civil to answer questions on behalf of the applicant.
I have a question. It may be more for you hunters. Why do we allow mulch paths? Because I can see, all I can see is that path ending up in the, in the retention pond every time it rains.
So, and I think any path, we, we do not have a standard for paths. It is something that our, both our Public Works and within the planning department are working toward because we have allowed these and to count green space, paths have been installed. A mulch path in and of itself is not necessarily a bad thing if designed right. And like, one of the things here, typically those are not put 90 degrees across a downslope. You know, they either switch back or they're converted to stairs or you have something because other, and we, we saw this even on a gravel path in another project where everything just washed down to the sidewalks. So, we asked for a solution and, and, you know, the comment back, again, there's only a week to respond, so we're here open-handed and open-minded to how this solution works out. The maintenance plan was essentially just four times a year?
Four times a year to remulch.
Remulch. That solves one problem and keeps at least the grass maybe beat back and, and not what you see in Phase One.
And the maintenance plan is there's an area of washout that gives instructions for digging it out, filling it with rock, then covering it with mulch again. If you can find the point of where the water's coming through to act as a French drain of sorts to try to stop the water from washing that portion out.
Now, that wasn't done, to my knowledge, on the, the trail we're looking at. So, the maintenance plan says do this, but it's not done here before final plat. It's tough to put a standard for a mulch path.
I'm just, I mean, because these trails are right next to that retention pond. I'm just, you know, the wood floats until it gets fully soaked and then it sinks to the bottom. So, retention pond's going to fill up a lot.
Right. And, and I think there is a, we allowed this at preliminary plat. It was a mulch path on the preliminary plat. So, we've been hesitant to require any other material, but we do want to see it designed well that is not going to just turn into grass. And I think it can be done. I, I don't think this is the final, you know, the best solution, um, just to keep putting mulch on it. So, I'd ask, you know, see if there's any other options and consider those as conditions of approval.
All right, thank you. All right, I'll go with, with the, uh, someone for SE Civil wish to speak at this time?
How you guys doing? Aaron Collins, SE Civil. I don't really have anything to add to this, to this. I know that we had some conversations with our client about, you know, uh, permanent solutions to, to the walking trail. So, I mean, if that's something that you want us to look further at, we can do that with WAS.
Questions for the developer at this time? Is this something that you think as people use the walking trail more and more, that the mulch will get kind of pushed down in and, and, you know, would you anticipate that?
Uh, I can't say. Honestly, uh, I don't, I don't know either way, whether it would or wouldn't.
When you got multiple, you know, weed treatment, you know, what's established, what's established on the size, keep it from running out. Uh, this was, I believe, just dug into the ground. I don't think there was a liner.
No.
No liners. And then again, the, when you put it on a slope like this, there's nothing to slow it down. Commissioner, no, do you have any advice? You probably know more than most of us in the room combined. So, do you have any input? Love to hear.
Well, yeah, having some sort of liner to help, you know, contain it and, um, uh, different, you know, mulch is mulch, but different types of mulch. Uh, uh, big hardwood chunks will float more than, um, some finer, you know, ones. But, um, and then there are products, stabilizer, uh, spray-over products that not, um, you know, that act kind of like glue. So, I mean, there are things to stiffen it up. But the main thing would be to identify the, the washout sources and, and try to take care of what's, you know, causing them to wash out.
Well, and on, on a slope like that, would it be? Even, even when you see kids building trails, you know, go put a log across here that keeps things from washing out. I mean, would, this is not an ADA accessible route. Would stairs be a problem? I mean, I, I'm just thinking that like, you know, something like cross ties, you know, in a few places. That at least keeps them from running all the way, you know, creates a dam for anything running down.
Yeah, anything like that would, would help, yeah.
Okay. And I'm, you know, the Phase One, we don't have a trail there now, right now. Has that been discussed at all, um, connecting that? We're still under, we're still under the maintenance bond. So, if you, if you can at least have that conversation so we don't have to make that a maintenance bond issue.
Absolutely.
To see if that, that can be addressed as well.
Is this something that y'all are proud of? Is this something we think is great? Or, or, I mean, it's my standard, your standard? I'm just trying to look at, is this what y'all expected? Is this to your needs and do you, are you proud of that?
Um, I mean, it's kind of hard for me to answer.
I don't want to put you in words, Mark. Larry Smith, SE Civil. As far as the mulch trail goes, I think part of the issue as one of the commissioners or was kind of getting to is right now, it's all been a construction site. And the contractor, they're, they're concerned to get it to a point and then they get it cleaned up. And, um, as now the developers will take over and get maintenance, yes, I think that it will become better than it is as of today. I think there are some things that can be done to help with the runoff.
What are some of the things that you think will make it better?
Um, I think Hunter had a good, um, point there is trying to create stair steps like you would when you're on a hiking trail and you see that when there's a steep terrain, you, it's, it's not stairs. But if they come in every, you know, so often and put a, you know, a railroad tire or timber to where it will hold that and create a, a flatter grade through there.
Essentially stepped landings.
Yes. Because it is, it's not an ADA route, it's, it's mulch. You know, they did build the boardwalk to, to an ADA standard, but getting to it is not. And so, um, the boardwalk, yes, that definitely be proud of that. I don't know if any of y'all actually got to walk across it. I did. I went, um, when we were doing our punch list and walked across it. They did a great job on that. And, um, and when I walked around the bottom area, um, it looked really nice. Yes, some wayfinding signs. I think, um, we didn't push back on that. That's, um, a great idea. They've got some benches set out along the perimeter that kind of guide you from one point to the other. We just have this issue with the connectivity and then the builders removing parts of the walking trail in Phase One. So, um, I think, I think it can definitely become what they anticipated. We've just got to get a few little things to get that done. But like Hunter was saying, you know, we get the comments and we've got a, a week to address that. They went as quickly as they could, got the boardwalk fixed. And, um, we'll work with Hunter and the staff to get this other condition or discuss the walking trail.
I feel like in the future, we need to remove mulch altogether. Every development we've had, we've had the same results. So, I, I just feel like that that's a, a bad material to use where we are. I think there's other options. That's my opinion. That's what I see. That's the feedback that I get from the people that sell in those neighborhoods. It's always, it, the mulch in the Publix new shopping center got all washed away. Guess what, guess what's there now? Punch draw. And it stays and it looks good and the weeds don't come through it. It's maintained, but it was, that was the first thing that I noticed. It's just not a material for our area. It's something we need to reconsider.
We are certainly, and we've kind of relied on the design teams to do, to do that. And mulch is not the only problem material. We've seen two other materials, um, that also have issues. So, we'll, we'll, we'll come up with a, some standards for, for, if somebody's gonna call a trail out, what those look like.
Well, I think another issue that we have is, you know, a lot of these preliminary plats come to us prior to elevations being shot, which to me is pretty insane.
Well, and Chairman, you, you actually bring up a good point that, that will have to be done because a lot of times we only see the grading for right-ofways and maybe common areas and not lots. And I think we need to get to a point where we're looking at a grading plan for the whole site. So, I think that, that's kind of key to, to making that happen at, at the preliminary stage.
This is a public hearing. I will go ahead and open the public hearing at this time. This is, uh, out on, uh, Fairhope Avenue, i.e. County Road 48, just past the Walmart on the south side of 48, just on the east side of River Mill. Anybody like to come and speak to this item? In that case, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing, commissioners? Any questions, concerns? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I move a conditional approval of SD 24.18 Overland Phase Two Final Plat Subject to Staff Recommendation.
Have a motion to approve subject to staff recommendations. Do I have a second? All right, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda, uh, SD 2407.
Okay, this is a rezoning case. Address is 7671 Parker Road. It's request to rezone from R1 to B4. So Christopher Leib is the authorized agent for the case and he's actually here. The owner Gerald Herring is deceased. Glenn is the son, is the executor of the estate. And the authorized agent applicant requests the subject property to be rezoned from R1, low-dent Z single family residential to B4 Business and Professional District. Like I said, it's located at 761, I mean, 7671 Parker Road. It consists of two parcels, actually. And the applicant desires to eventually utilize both parcels for professional office use. The more immediate plan is for the applicant to make the existing residential building into professional office. And the eastern parcel, because there are two, is adjacent to Baldwin County RSF2. It's also, that's, it's also next to Parkstones behind it, which is us in the city. So that's what that looks like, that's where it is. So this is the site plan. There's just some added parking and some buffers he's put in there. So, the B4 Business Professional, Professional District is intended to provide opportunity for business establishment of a professional nature and is restricted to offices and businesses which provide specific corporate functions or professional services to the general public, in this case, engineering. So it currently has the single-family home and some accessory structures. It lies next to the city, city zone Parkstone, which is also residential to the west and then to the north. In Baldwin County residential to the east. It's right across from the Fly Creek PUD, which has business and residential components. So, we think that this rezoning makes sense for this area. There are incompatible uses, so the applicant has provided a 20-foot landscape buffer around the property. So, with any zoning map amendment, and we've seen a lot lately, we must consider the initial desire as well as what could be in the future. So staff feels professional office is appropriate for the neighborhood. However, there are some uses allowed in B4 such as boarding house or dormitory. We love that one, by the way, or public utility, which are available uses. But we would not recommend that right now. We'd want any change in use would be, require all the appropriate reviews, so it'd come back to the table. So in that vein, we do recommend approval of 2407 rezoning from R1 to B4 with the following conditions, because these are available uses in B4 and 31. So regardless of the allowed uses, the following uses shall be prohibited on the subject property. So, elementary school, secondary school, library, public utility, grocery, convenience store, convalescent or nursery home, nursing home, outdoor recreation facility, mortuary or funeral home, personal storage, boarding house or dormitory, limited manufacturing. So currently, the request is to use it as professional office. We support that, but any other change in the use other than professional office would come back to the table and adhere to all applicable laws and regulations at the time of that application.
Any questions for staff at this time? If not, would somebody on behalf of the developer wish to speak at this time?
Good evening, Chris Leib, Leib Engineering Company. I'm just here to answer any questions that you may have. This is a personal project of mine. I'm looking to convert my, to an office and bring my business back to Fairhope. And that's, that's the intent of, of this rezoning. And might I add that since I'm a resident of Montrose, I appreciate y'all protecting our trees.
Is this right across the street from Publix?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
And right in front of the subdivision that, um,
If you recall, that PUD had one lot that was commercial on Parker Road. This is right next to that commercial lot.
That's what I was thinking, I was.
Just be where that trailer was.
For some reason that, I couldn't see 98 on that, on that map. And I just wanted to make sure I was, I was pretty sure when I was drove out that that was it. Any questions for the developer?
What is your business?
Oh, it's an engineering company.
You will see him on occasion as on the other side, representing an applicant, so.
Yes. As the applicant and the engineer as well, so.
All right, well, no questions. Um, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing at this time. And of course, for anybody in the public, this is a zoning request. So unlike the subdivision request that we had earlier, zoning request is an ordinance and only the city council has the rights to approve ordinances. So in this case, we will simply make a recommendation to the city council to approve or to deny. So just wanted to let you know that. So you'll have one more chance of this in a future city council meeting. So, um, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing with that said. Anybody from the public wish to speak to this item? All right, I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners?
Make a motion to, uh, with ZC 2407, um, with staff recommendations approval.
We've got a motion to make a recommendation of, subject to the staff, recommendation of approval, subject to the staff recommendation. Do I have a second? Correct.
But it has a, approved with conditions.
Correct. All right, so I've got a motion and a second to recommend approval of the city council, subject to, uh, the recommendations of usage. Do I have any further discussion?
And this is gonna sound like a dumb question, and I'm sorry. When it says, you know, rezoning request is for professional office, any change in use shall meet all applicable laws and regulations at the time of application. So I just want to make sure I fully understand what that wording means. Is that having to come back again if?
Basically, any of the uses that are allowed in B4 that we're restricting here, if somebody wants to do that, they have to come back for that rezoning case and amend that rezoning case.
Gotcha, okay.
Any further questions? If not, I'll, oh, wait, that's further discussion, excuse me. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, motion to recommend approval, passes unanimously.
All right, um, so little, little bittersweet here. We've got an amendment and I think long ago, Fairhope was very on the cutting edge by not requiring parking in the CBD. We're, we're now proposing to require parking in the CBD for certain uses. The lifeblood is, is our comp plan and longstanding has been retail and restaurants. Like, that's the lifeblood of, of, of the heart of Fairhope, as it's known in the comprehensive plan. I think y'all are certainly aware of a lot of the projects we've seen. And, and the current trends are office and, um, either, either residential or, you know, residential slash B and Airbnb kind of things like that. And, and right now, the only thing that has parking explicitly is those dwelling units. Anything that has a conditional use going to Board of Adjustment is kind of a, what have we done in the past? What have we required? So, we are proposing to add some, not quite as strict as the parking requirements in the rest of town. So, we didn't want to go that drastic and we're certainly willing to talk about some of the ratios we're using. But we are proposing within the CBD section, a new parking requirement table. I'm kind of going through the red lines you have in your packet, uh, striking out the existing parking language. This is, um, and then adding a table. This really mimics the section in Article Four of the zoning ordinance for parking requirements in the rest of town. Slight custom language, but otherwise mimics the, the, that language verbatim. You will see the highlighted here, Table 51 on the slide is different because I mistakenly put Table 52 in your packet. So I just wanted to highlight that is a change before it, it came to you. Essentially, instead of one parking space per dwelling unit, whether that is one bedroom or 12, we are proposing .75 spaces required per bedroom. That scales and, and we, instead of a one-to-one ratio, we're trying to give a little bit of flexibility there. Up until three bedrooms, you basically required that parking. You start to get a little relief at four. So, and I'll show you a table in a little bit if we want to debate whether that's .75, one, 1.25. A house is allowed to be Airbnb right now, the way our zoning ordinance is. So that would have the same ratio. If it is a bed and breakfast, you also have one space per every five employees. A lot of the trends is there's no employees on site unless that's a bed and breakfast. Somebody lives there as well, that has a residential unit, so the third column would have two residential spaces, and then .75 spaces per guest room. Community clubs, centers, probably not going to see too much of, that's not associated directly with the CBD, I mean, with the city. Indoor recreation, same. And we did include entertainment venues. You know, we've got a few of those, and those don't provide any parking right now. They can be a big draw. So we're proposing some parking requirements there. Clinics are doctors' offices. It can be anything, doctors' offices, you know, the generic dock in the box, whatever you want to think of, anything medical falls under that. Aside from this parking, we're looking at a different definition, that your traditional, you know, one-two doctor dentist office is different than a 20-person clinic. And we, if we get that definition, we can, we can bring that in here. Essentially, offices in professional, the one space per each, 400 square feet of floor area. That is what we're proposing, and I'll show you a little study. We've, we came to that. We're certainly up for discussion on that, that requirement. Restaurants, bars, retail and general merchandise, no parking required, automobile service station. We just pulled every use that's allowed by any of the underlying zoning districts and added, added those uses to this table. And then essentially, the four items on the screen, it requires parking space to be located behind the building screen from public rights of way and have a direct pedestrian connection to the primary building entrance. That's already in the CBD section. We just moved it down. That was one of the things we struck out before. Parking dimensions and size, we just didn't want the redundancy. Those are already in Article Four, so we refer to that. This is maybe one we need to talk about, but parking spaces shall be located on the same lot as the land use that requires parking. So all-site parking would essentially require variance waiver if you're going to do that. And we put the same parking credits that we have in the existing table. So with approval, now, I would like to put who approves that, because the, it really works through the process, but to get credit for any on-street parking within 300 feet of the, the building, or for five bicycle parking space, or spaces for bicycles in lieu of one parking space, that's always one of those, who gives the permission to it? I would like for that to come to the planning commission to do that explicitly. It usually has to. Sometimes it only goes to Board of Adjustment, so how do you do that?
I think one thing, if I can interrupt you for a second, that we need to do as well if we're going to give credits, is we also need to give debits for how many Publix parking spaces they're taking away. You know, I've been looking at places like the backside of Gold Monkey that's taken three parking spaces away, or when you look at the old South Trust Bank Building, I can't remember which of the 35 banks that have been there since South Trust is there now, or the Compass Bank Building, and you look at, you know, Compass Bank Building has about five parking spaces on one side and two on the other taken up. And I almost got a ticket from a policeman just parked out there, and I couldn't see, wow, there was no reason for me to park there. You've got 150 feet of asphalt there that's doing nothing. It's the driveway, you know, it's not even closed. But I think we need to really look at that, maybe even have an impact fee for every parking space that somebody takes away. When you look at the value of a parking space for the public, and when somebody comes in and, and, you know, cuts a curb and takes a parking space away, that should be one, you know, I think that they should have to replicate that parking space with another on-street parking, not a private parking, especially when you see how many businesses are putting no parking, you know, parking for their people only on actual public parking spaces.
Right.
And that's something I think we need to put a fine for. I can go and point out 30 to 40 public parking spaces that people have private parking signs.
And we can certainly put that in as number three, that has to have approval for that, whatever that process may be. We can figure out the details. I think that's a, and I'll tell you, from a staff level, it's kind of challenging sometimes because everybody wants to come in and get credit for the parking. Every parking space is within 300 feet, and every site is different. I mean, some have maybe some unused parking in the street, some are full from 6:00 a.m. because somebody parked there the day before till 6:00 p.m., and it's always a challenge to, to say. And I'll tell you what, our stance is always, we're not going to support on-street parking unless there is a really good reason. And as y'all know, we also have requirements of loading zones in the zoning ordinance. So there was one, I think we did, you know, supportive mitigation of some on-street credits because they moved all the loading zones. And if y'all drive down Section Street, you know what kind of problem that is with all the Cisco trucks lined up. So do y'all have a, it's kind of tough. Who, who gives the credits? Who's the approver of those, in opinion there? It's kind of a?
I think it should come when the site plan review comes in. And we should be looking at holistically, at, you know, how many parking spaces are they taking away? How many, you know, how far, you know, are they looking at, you know, going away and adding parking spaces? And, you know, a lot of my feelings of that is, is why are we even giving credits at all? If we have parking spaces that can be identified, why shouldn't the city go ahead and open those up now at their own dime? You know, I've, there's so many parking spaces, I'd love to see this opened up where, you know, I feel like with the 15 mile an hour speed limit, when you pull up to a stop sign, anything to the left, there's no reason that, you know, we have so many of these parking spaces that are, you know, lined out, is my personal view.
I agree with Lee. I think that we took a lot of time with having people come in and urban developers talk about our pedestrian and walking, and we got so much out of that, and we worked on that, and that's changed. But now, we definitely need to work on a parking issue and revitalize that and maybe look at it from a different perspective. But, you know, we still are living in COVID times with these 15-minute wasted spots that people are happy to go pay a $25 ticket, including me, when I'm only there for 20 minutes. But that's fine, because that's what I had to do. But there, I mean, there's loading zones that I've never seen a truck load there ever, ever, and it should probably be timed like this, you know, no parking between these times, and we can use that.
And that, we've, we've talked about that, the loading zones, it's a challenge, and I would, I would highly recommend when we get to that, we bring some of the business owners in, because, you know, especially restaurants, things like that, they, I mean, one of the complaints is they would love to have morning deliveries, but Cisco is going to go to Food World, Winn-Dixie Publix before they come to one of our restaurants. You know, and they can't make them come in the morning, so that's the problem. And it's a practical problem, how do we, how do we solve?
If that's the only option that they have, then Cisco might have to change its way a little bit, or somebody else may come in. And I think the one Holly is referring to is right in front of another broken egg.
Broken egg, yes.
And it's the craziest thing ever, they, the very back.
They're closed.
They have a, you know, they have a dedicated parking space in the back to make it where you have to parallel for the three that they've given up, rather than having the dedicated one in the front. But I've never seen that one used, and I've seen Cisco trucks parked in, in front of it, you know, 30 times.
Well, I've never seen truly any, in front of the police station, no one ever parked there.
I've never seen that either. And while we have a parking space given up, when you look at the value of parking spaces for people doing online, when the merchants are the ones paying all the taxes, and we've got dedicated parking spaces to people that do online deals, I mean, how does that help Fairhope? I've just, you know?
I'm just here for the parking amendment conversation.
I have a business downtown, and I, we're not allowed to park in, anywhere in downtown because that is for, that is for the shoppers, not for the business owners. And business owners parking in front of their business should be penalized.
Well, and again, that, that is, that is another conversation. This would only affect new developments coming in. That's all we're doing here. That is maybe an enforcement and another conversation of?
I think it's a good idea, and I think a lot of this stuff should be looked at, you know, as far as the credits when we do the, you know, the mops. And, you know, having a office in the central business district, I, you know, recognize that my office does very little to enhance the central business district. And I'm, you know, totally in support of, you know, doing everything we can to help retail and restaurants in the downtown. We've always said that what makes Fairhope, Fairhope is the central business district, and as prices get higher and higher, I think we've got a real concern that the more large office complexes that go up, how is that going to help the central business district? And then there's so many changes after we look and approve them. I mean, there's one right now that we approved on one of the subjectivities was a, you know, an opening between the patio, and another was a large oak tree, and now there's a big electrical box right where we required a large oak tree to be. And it doesn't come back for final plat approval, or it'd be really interesting for us to deny something based on what the city of Fairhope did. But that, you know, and we might need to get together with public utilities and make sure we're all on the same page, that, you know, are we looking for Fairhope to be what we have the vision of Fairhope to be in the comprehensive plan, or are we just looking to save money whenever we do a public project such as put a, you know, do we expect all of our construction folks to spend every, you know, big money to do something attractive, but then we're going to save money to city Fairhope and junk it up ourselves? And that's a concern that I have, and I was very disappointed, you know, in that one project over on Magnolia Avenue, where just right there on Section Street, we've got a big green box, just like down on one of the prettiest public parks. So we didn't spend an extra $5,000 and sink the big green box in one of Fairhope's beautiful parks. But I think that, that we need to make sure that, that 1157-11 reviews come for any of these mop projects that we do in the future, because what good is it for us to approve projects and then, you know, behind us, the, the parking gets changed by the city or the electrical service or the, you know, water?
Or lunch.
You know? But that's long, but I do support these, these changes. With the one addition, I feel like we need to make sure that, you know, we debit any parking space that anybody takes away in any project.
And I did, not in your packet, did have one other quick one before we advertised it for city council.
And by the way, I see Larry and Mac both would like to make some comments on this.
I'll make sure we decide some time.
Yeah, well, this is a public hearing, so there'll be an opportunity for any input. Article Four, Section E two has the existing parking table. We, in that, it says the things about the central business district, parking in the central business district. So we do have that removed. Now, just, we do recommend this, to give you a little bit, if we need to, we can bring up the ratios and how that might affect dwelling or, or mixed-use developments. And then just to kind of get where the office space number we came from, just looking at some of the developments through, throughout time, and, and looking at some of those and what parking is, we kind of compared a lot of those and what that ratio is. And, you know, what I think you saw historically was there's a lot of folks that are intentionally wanting to handle some parking on the site. That ultimately limits a little bit of your building area. You know, I wish Chris was here. His office is right here, top left. You know, if you drive by, did they ever get the permit for that?
Help me out, which one?
Right, right, hand hand on the, the?
Yes, yes. And I went by you talking the gatearm?
Yeah. I mean, they, they put a gatearm because they were having to pay for police because everybody around town was parking in, in the space, in the lot. And, and we're getting a lot more of that information now. You know, one of the things, looking at some of these, to the chairman's point, I think ingress egress is important. You know, to have on-site parking, you're going to need some ingress egress. That may be where an existing parking space is, that we need to evaluate where the best location is, but two, I think, are a problem. You know, that's then you're taking out, you know, more and where that fits in, and I think that each of those projects need to be looked at comprehensively on, on where that parking resides. So that's my presentation. I'm here for you if you need any questions, but it is a public hearing.
Chairman, before we move forward with a recommendation to the city council?
All right, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing at this time. Mac, can you come up? Please just officially say your name and address for the, even though we know who you are for our secretary.
Yeah, I'm Mac Walker. I'm wearing several hats tonight as a downtown property owner, business operator, and as an architect. And I had a couple of questions for you guys, then a couple of suggestions. First question, is there a parking problem? Because I, I live downtown, just like y'all do. I work downtown, I don't live downtown. And if there is a parking problem, how are we, is it a subjective assessment? Because I can talk to as many people as y'all can about parking issues. How are we identifying it and how do we model that? Because, you know, and that's, that's something a traffic consultant could help, or you guys. But ultimately, I'd like to say to all of us, whenever I go through downtown and can't find a place, and I drive and find a place, I'm a block and a half, two blocks away, which is ultimately a walking problem. And with our livable downtowns and our vibrant streets, what a great thing. Every time I do that, I walk by some businesses, I say hi to somebody. What's wrong with walking? And so we're taking parking as if the cars matter more than the people do. So I'd hope we would take a, a fresh look at walkability and decide that it's not the end of the world to have to walk three blocks to get to your destination. I think we'll come up with a different assessment, and I hope we do that objectively, not subjectively. The second thing, and I think some comments earlier tonight were interesting, I look to see what comp plan we're under. I guess we're in between the old and the new, right? Is the, the old is the operative one right now?
Correct.
Is that correct? And I think it embraces mixed use, i.e. residential use downtown. I didn't, I didn't hear that. I heard residential, I didn't, I heard restaurants and bars and ground-level stuff. So if we're subtly switching from wanting downtown residential, we ought to talk about that, because the ordinance that's being considered tonight, or maybe y'all will table it, it, and let's acknowledge, most of downtown, half of it is small lots, just what we've inherited as Fairhope. They're very difficult to work on, we all know that. But these ordinances that are, the change in the ratios that are being considered tonight indirectly or directly discourage development on these small lots. And that's, that's something to think about. Is that what we want? Because it basically discourages, let's imagine someone with a small lot that wants to add a, a single unit in the back with two bedrooms. Well, can they even do that? And do we want that to happen? So those are my two questions. Do we want to just start discouraging? Because I think, I own property, and this ordinance, by re, it would discourage me from developing downtown property. So is it your intent to discourage further downtown development? And then the last thing is, is this, is a question that deals to this, how do you determine this 300-foot thing? The 300-foot thing has been around as long as I can remember. It goes back a long time, and used to be used routinely to manage or address property issues or parking issues downtown. The specific issue that I wish y'all would rethink is that because of the may category instead of a shell, the property owners are at risk way into the process. For instance, we're working on a project today, then in order to get a definitive answer about that parking question, which is a threshold issue, right? It's, it's, it's a huge issue on these small lots about what you can do and whether viable or not. Our client will probably spend $20,000 with us and our engineers before we even get an answer to that question. So can't we craft an ordinance that we all like that has some clarity to it? You know, all of us want to open up the planning book, read it, I'll go do this, I'll go do that. We have a system now where so many issues are in this crazy world that just is very expensive and very discouraging for people, unless that's our intent. So I hope we could, you know, eliminate the may because it's, it's We have a system now where so many issues are in this crazy world that just is very expensive and very discouraging for people, unless that's our intent. So I hope we could, you know, eliminate the, the May because it's, it's gone 180 degrees in, in my experience in Fairhope. And if you, if we want to use the adjacency thing, possibly make, uh, within 100 feet it's Shell and beyond 100 feet or 150 feet it's May or something. I don't know. Give it some way where, where an owner can make some, uh, early decisions without having to go through all this. And, and the parking component is just one component of the whole MOP process. As y'all know, it's a very difficult process for an owner to go through to not know what they can do with their property without having expended that money at risk. So I hope y'all would reconsider some of that and thinking about it.
Well, I think, Mac, there certainly would be some changes when you look at the value of properties. If you had a property that backed up to a parking garage in downtown or to a, a corner lot where you can get one way in and one way out versus a lot in the center of a block, I know you know, just working puzzles, the difference that that would be. The, I think one of the big problems that, that the staff is recognizing and that we're seeing is that we are not getting a balance of requirement, of, of requests now. You know, you talked this, and we're one of the big salesperson of going to 40 feet so that we could have attractiveness on the buildings that we've built. And since we've gone to the 40-feet height, with the exception of John Bethay's building on Section Street, every other building's been lot line to lot line, 40-feet rectangular square with zero architectural attractiveness at all. Um, you know, a lot of them, large offices with large parking requirements, where you're going to have 50 people trying to find, um, speak, um, you know, parking. And unfortunately, the parking garage will have 130 parking spaces at 2:00 in the afternoon.
Right.
And all of these people are parked all up and down in front of the merchants, uh, businesses, not shopping, they're just doing their.
You're making my point.
In my case, my insurance. So the, the, I, I agree. So the point is, is we're trying to look at when every proposal has been coming in that's going to take heavy on-street parking, uh, the city needs to look at that prior to just carte blanche allowing this. I, I think if, if we were getting more of a mixture of, of proposals, there wouldn't be as much concern.
Well, a question then is, i- if we didn't change a thing and two years from now, the parking was so bad, and that's my, my early question, what does a parking emergency or parking problem look like to all of us?
Well, what we're trying to do is prevent from having an emergency. I mean, right now, I think you would walk less in Fairhope than you would at Walmart if you parked. But the concern, when you look at all of the requests that we have, and you've got, you know, 100,000 feet of offices and, and doctor's offices and, and hotels with, you know, 30, 40 units planned in downtown with, with next to no parking. The concern is, what if we take what we have today and then add, in every single project that comes in, we're adding on-street parking, on-street parking, on-street parking? With rent going as high as it is, how are the retail merchants going to survive? And if you haven't noticed, we've got seven clothing stores that have closed down in Fairhope. And, and I think that's where the concern is coming from.
And that's not from parking that they're closing, you know that. The, the, they're, they're closing for a lot of reasons. But my question is, instead of changing the ability of, of a small lot to develop, why not be creative and do an impact fee for anybody? Contribute $20,000 of space and go build another garage and then figure out how to induce people to use it? That would be a good urban planning.
People already use the current garage, so why should we build another garage?
Well, and I'm going to correct you on that, you know, there, and, and we'll get some numbers for you. So there is some objective studies. The Parking Authority, as, as you know, Chairman, kind of went defunct for a while. They're back up, and they are actually driving through every day. And, and you, now you've got a problem, because a lot of the empty parking spaces are earmarked for Hampton Inn. Um, and they are doing that study. So we'll, we'll be able to provide that by, hopefully by the City Council. Um, I believe they were looking for three months of data to see what the actual, and that, and if y'all recall, that was the whole purpose of the alleyway project, to do that.
Sure. The preliminary numbers are there are almost always 100 parking spaces available there. But we'll get all the detailed numbers, but.
And that's separating out which ones are for Hampton Inn versus?
There's only about two levels that, it's the third and fourth that are not Hampton Inn. The top and the next to top. The first two levels are Hampton Inn, but, um.
I really wasn't planning, Larry Smith, Essie Civil. I really wasn't planning on coming here to speak on this. I just saw it on the agenda, so it's the first thing. Just some of the things I was feeling as I saw it, though, um, just had a whole different downtown popping up, and that's what concerned me. Um, Mac kind of touched on it with these small lots. I've done several projects in the downtown area, and anytime we've had to do parking in the rear, the first thing you've got to get is to the rear. There's not alleys behind every single commercial piece of property in the CBD. And so what you end up doing is you end up carving a 20-foot swath. And if you're sitting there with a 40-foot building, I'm just seeing a whole new downtown emerging with a bunch of little driveways to get back to the back. And my concern is, is, um, kind of what Mac touched, touched on, I, I don't know which businesses closed down in, um, in the retail, um, but I, I'm guessing I know the reason because I see a lot of boxes show up on my doorstep, too. Um, and if we start making, um, it to where other types of businesses are being pushed out of downtown, you're going to start seeing your restaurants close and everything else. Because when I was downtown, I went out, unfortunately, um, I went out to eat about three times a week, and I saw several of the other business owners that had offices, not retail, had offices downtown. Um, I'd see them at the different restaurants at lunch every day. It's not just a city for tourism. It is a city that the offices, the businesses are supporting the restaurant spaces and everything else. And if all of a sudden, if I wanted to move back into downtown, I've got to create a parking lot, what am I going to have to do? I'm going to have to tear down the existing buildings there so I can get to the rear of the parking lot. I mean, um, you have a business downtown, um, you do have an alley, I believe, that you kind of sort of can get.
I, I don't get to park in it. The other people get to park in it. I park in the public parking behind the Fairhope bin.
Yeah.
And I walk, and I, like Mac, I love to walk. I get to visit. If I have my name tag on, I'm the tour guide for the town. Everybody wants to know something, I love it.
Oh, no. And I'll come down.
But when you're carrying a sign or a bunch of stuff, you got to pull in real quick and get out, but.
But in, in this new world, if you were to open up your office, you couldn't go into that spot anymore. You would not be allowed on that street, or you'd have to tear down the building to.
You got to go up.
So, um, I just, I, I want, I want everybody to just kind of think about how that would.
I think you make some very good points, and, and I'd love to talk further about it just sometime, maybe over lunch in downtown, but.
I'm, I do come down every Friday.
And not just me, but, but the concerns are just, uh, the scale of what we're getting new. We're getting no retail new, we're getting, um, office after office, large, large-scale offices, uh, requests for hotels that eventually there won't be anything to come to with, um, and just concerned about it just choking downtown parking down. It's not the smaller scale items here and there, it's just.
And I agree, and I think everybody agrees that we need to be proactive and not reactive. But I think, and I don't want to put words in Mac's mouth, but are we running too quickly? Because this, this is the first time I've seen it, y'all might have seen it before. But I'd hate for it just to jump to the next level and not think of the things that we're keeping out of downtown. Because, um, you know, as, you know, the different online boutiques start popping up, because like I said, I get packages daily from online boutiques, um, at my house. Um, you know, retail, unfortunately, is going to have a whole new face, and maybe you are going to want some of these offices moving downtown. Not saying we don't need to have a parking study, I just don't want to jump too soon.
Yeah, Fairhope has got to be an experience.
Yeah.
That's the only way it can compete with Amazon. If it can't compete with Amazon, maybe Fairhope will die down like it was when I was young. Maybe all the retail will be gone. We'll have a bunch of offices and, and, you know, I mean, I don't know that. I pray, pray that that wouldn't happen, but you know, we take it for granted so much. And, um, but, but the concern is just to have a balanced city, how do we protect the retail? And I'd love both of y'all to give us advice on, you know, how to do that. That's what we're attempting to do here.
Ryan Baker, um, also a resident here at Fairhope, 460 Dogwood, and also my, uh, business partner. I'm just going to kind of add on to what Larry is saying, I want to think about it in a different way. Um, you will destroy downtown Fairhope with this parking, in my, in my opinion. If you start making driveways at every parking, you're going to get rid of the character of downtown by having driveways, taking out downtown parking spaces for curb cuts. You're going to create a whole new, long-term, what you're talking about is a short-term vision of what do we solve the residential whatever problem? 10 years from now, it's going to be a different one, you know? But if you start looking at it again and again, you're going to disincentivize multi-story buildings downtown, you're going to disincentivize the street front approach of lots of businesses wall to wall, because you're going to create a lot of curb cuts. You're going to disincentivize a lot of businesses that would want to move here because they won't be able to have the space, the land, or, or they'll have to tear down two, buy three lots, tear down two buildings, create a parking lot next to their big building. So I don't want to pick on any particular thing, but you end up with a lot of this next door to us, there's a large parking lot, you'd have a lot of that downtown. So you'd have a whole look, a different feel of what downtown would be. And why, um, I think we all love Fairhope as this unique downtown. It's, it's definitely different than everywhere else in the South.
Do you not feel that we're getting a whole different look at the downtown now based on the building on Magnolia Avenue and the other presentations that have been coming into us?
Well, you're, when you say that, what do you mean by that?
Well, I mean, the original plan that we had was going to be a 12-foot wall, uh, right along Magnolia Avenue.
Right.
Um, and, and a, you know, parking behind it and a building that's, you know, rectangular, looks like it would be in any modern city in downtown Mobile, Birmingham, or, or what have you, with, um, I don't know why we need architects to design buildings in Fairhope when they're all 40 feet tall, lot line to lot line. I mean, Kai could draw a box. Um, and I'm just wondering, you know, how much more of that, uh, is going to come in? We need engineers, so we need architects, too. You know, I'm just giving Mac a little bit of a shoot. But, but do you not feel that the character is changing in Fairhope currently?
I think that there is an evolution of a town, and change is a good thing, and that architecture change is not, you know, stagnant either. So you have lots of opportunities, but this ordinance favors restaurants and retail, no parking requirements for those. So you're encouraging a single-story building. Soon as you go to a second floor with office space, now I need to start adding parking. I have a small lot, where am I going to put it? The May doesn't allow you to utilize the street parking for any of that, so where am I going? I got to tear down something to do that. Or I got, you know, so you, you start limiting that overall downtown feel. That's the long-term approach. I just want y'all to think about that. It, it, it's not, it's not a, just solving the parking problem of today. Think about what the impact of the overall feel downtown long-term is. That's, that's not all I'm at.
Anybody else from the public wish to speak to this?
Hi. Good evening. Garrett Gover, 300 Lincoln Street in Fairhope. Uh, this morning, I attended a meeting of the Parking Authority. Their focus is on the central business district, and they're working hard on much of these same issues. So I think you've got, uh, a problem that needs a lot broader participation in order to, uh, address all the concerns and to benefit from all the good ideas that people have come up with. In addition, uh, there's probably also an effect on some things that have to do with pedestrian traffic and bicycle traffic, uh, in the downtown that need looking at. Part, it's part of the same large story of, uh, how do people come and go in the downtown? How do the, how does this help the businesses? How does it support residences, um, especially for the, uh, staff that works in these businesses? And so on. So you got yourself, uh, a big problem. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak to this item? All right. All right, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing at this time. Commissioners, do y'all feel comfortable recommending this at this time?
How do you feel about tabling it?
I'm sorry?
How do you feel about tabling this?
Hey, we're, we're making a recommendation. Uh, if, if we're going to table it, I'd like to, I don't want to table it if y'all think it's not fruitful. So if you have specific things to mention, tabling it works.
I'm going to table it for 30 days just to kind of think about it, since it is such a big change.
And I will, you know.
I like to call some of the people and talk in, you know, in depth because I, you know, get some of their ideas of some changes that we could make to help.
Sure. I do want to address a few comments.
You know, to help, and to file the retail and so forth.
Sure. Um, just to address a couple of comments, um, we, we have worked with the Parking Authority. Actually, that was one of the problems, there was no Parking Authority. So getting that ramped up, um.
How many people do we have on the Parking Authority?
I believe that's a committee of seven? Or is it nine? I can't, I, we've got a lot of committees, I don't remember.
Can you find that on their, on the website? I'm just curious to know who's on it and.
It's on the website. Sure. It's on the website, under committees. Um, the, so, you know, that, that is part of the conversation, and certainly this is not, this has been a conversation going on six months. Um, you know, paid parking was on the table, building parking decks, all of those things, um, have been on the table. And, and I will say, there was, um, not the intent, anything we can do to, to change this and make it clear. We're, we're not saying that, um, I think Holly's office was used, that somebody coming in wanting to put a new office in, that's existing, you know, use, that that's going to change, you have to tear it down to keep the same office. That's certainly not the intent. What's theirs, there. Um, you know, it would be if it is not an office, if it's a retail store being converted into an office, yes, there would be parking requirements. That keeps it essentially a retail space. I think we are seeing our restaurant or something along those lines, at least on the ground floor. Now, if somebody's looking at a mixed-use development and, and, uh, Mac, we did actually call out mixed-use, so that's still a, a goal. Um, I think y'all have seen some of the projects we've reviewed, that mixed-use is not really mixed-use. It's, you know, a token of retail or office space on the ground floor and then a parking garage, and then residential or something above that. And as many as you can pack in. So, uh, it is a, a challenge, what do you do? We're certainly open to a continued conversation. I have no, you know, this is, this is some issues that we're, we're trying to resolve. Welcome anyone's input.
Uh-uh. I don't know. Maybe it's because I'm not downtown all the time, but I was down here like four times just today alone. I park right here and walk. So it's not, I don't think it's a real, well, it is a parking issue, but.
I, I don't think the, the stance we, we've stated is, again, this is about new development.
Yeah.
You know, I don't think we have a parking problem today. I don't think we have a walkability problem. Certainly, there's some input within there, you know? Like Holly said, most business owners, owners want to complain, but they're parking in front of their neighbor.
Yeah.
And then complain the next-door neighbor is parking in front of them. That's pretty common, we see that all the time. That's not the problem we're trying to solve. If you look at the historic way that properties have developed, they are, most of those properties are, are putting a building that scales with things that can be handled on that property. So we can go with form gates, there's other ways to solve this. But, um, we, we've increased height, we've, you know, property values are going through the roof, and you see people coming in with projects that want to maximize every square inch. And they're pushing all those things to the right of way. You know, instead of those back-of-house.
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're looking at transformers now.
Yeah. I mean, it's, and you look even across the street.
And I've got a dumpster on my property from a neighbor's property.
We just redid High Street, and we couldn't get the parking in there because there's a sidewalk and, uh, other transformers and everything that got pushed into the right where, where historically those developments were happening, and you're keeping those items on a lot in question.
So why can't we do something to alter that versus making it a different way?
I, I think we are. I think, you know, that's one of the things we're looking at as far as going forward. You know, you learn lessons on the, you don't learn anything from the really good developments. You learn stuff from the garbage developments, and you learn a lot, and I think we have.
And one of the things that I'm, I'm kind of shocked, because I, the, one of the main goals of doing this, um, was so that people on the front end can know what's required, because there's a lot of these uses that go to Board of Adjustment. And, and we're there trying to figure out what is the ratio? There's nothing, you know, it's, you've got to handle the parking domain.
And then we make exceptions, and then everybody says the exception is now the rule. So everybody then wants the exception. And we end up with more, you know, we end up with more, uh, you know, you walk, jog down the sidewalk and there's a water meter missing, and you break your ankle. the sidewalk and there's a water meter missing and you break your ankle, why are water meters on the sidewalks?
But then everybody wants a quick answer, but when we give a quick answer, you know, like the process is, I mean...
So, we should fix our...
But, but there's some changes we need to make, but I think this is one, we got it on Thursday, and such a big change, I think, holding it over to the next meeting, I think, is certainly reasonable, let the commissioners look at it, think about it, call some, you know, check on some wise counsel, make a recommendation.
And we welcome any, I mean, not just commissioners, if anybody has any, you know, feedback, we're welcome in a structured way.
We really need to be looking at what we're going to look like in 30 years from now, and not a knee-jerk reaction like we have been in our residential field where we can't, we don't have a lot, a lot of control of what's, you know, coming, so I think...
No, I agree, and part of that, if we look at that, I'm wondering if we ought to go back on our height requirement some, if we need to really put down, you know, re...
That's, that's what I'm trying to get to.
Re-say that we need to make sure that, you know, all water meters and, and all utilities are in the rear of property.
We can create rear setbacks and make, you know, make sure there's room behind the... There's other ways to do it, but you're at the end of the day.
If anything is already done, we can only...
This is not intended to affect anything that's already done. That's looking at new, so whatever that looks like.
Another golf cart, it's Dodge Rattles, you can pick people up here and show them all the way down.
Well, yeah, again, there's got to be...
I appreciate our architects and engineers' input because we need your, the way your brain works, because mine doesn't put our puzzles together. And I know there's a lot of wasted space in Fairhope, too, that's just sitting. I know that there's law offices that have probably, you know, almost looks like an acre behind their law office, and they have two people that work there. I'd love to rent a parking spot, but, and walk, but, you know, I mean, there's just...
Well, and I think that's been some of the conversation, especially on off-site parking, if it's, you know, that's a Pandora's Box, do you want to really get into?
All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Do we have to table this?
Oh, yeah, do I have a motion to table?
I move to table, ZC 24.0.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that, yes.
Table's in the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay, any further discussion? Hall in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Aye, make a motion.
Hall in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No discussions on that.